Good afternoon or evening. I would like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 6:01. Planning Commission Secretary, may we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Sarno.
Here.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Here.
Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Cervantes.
Here.
Chair Ayala.
Here.
Please note that Commissioner Flores just walked in, so all present.
Okay, I would like to call upon Commissioner Flores for the Pledge of Allegiance. Don't sit down just yet, brother.
Behind us.
Right now, we're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good afternoon or evening. I would like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 6:01. Planning Commission Secretary, may we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Sarno.
Here.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Here.
Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Cervantes.
Here.
Chair Ayala.
Here.
Please note that Commissioner Flores just walked in, so all present.
Okay, I would like to call upon Commissioner Flores for the Pledge of Allegiance. Don't sit down just yet, brother.
Behind us.
Right now, we're up. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosures regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications?
None.
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 None. Okay, public comments on non-agenda and non-public hearing agenda items. At this time, the general public may address a planning commission on both non-agenda and non-public hearing agenda items. Comments relating to public hearing items will be heard during the public hearing. Please be aware that the maximum time allotted for members of the public to speak shall not exceed three minutes per speaker. State law prohibits that discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Please show courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the chairperson. Planning Commission Secretary, do we have any members of the public present that wish to speak today?
None.
Okay. I will now close the public comments and move on to the next item. Elections for Planning Commission Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. I would like to call upon Planning Commission Secretary to please proceed with election of commission officers for 2025.
Thank you. I would like to declare the office of Chairperson vacant. Nominations are now open. Do any of the commissioners have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Jay Sarno as the Chair of the Planning Commission.
Um, Jay Sarno, would you like to, do you accept the nomination?
Uh, it's my first meeting. I'm a, oh, yes.
So we have a nomination from Joseph Flores to nominate, uh, Jay Sarno. Um, if no further nominations, I will close the nominations for Chairperson. Do we have a motion for the nomination of Jay Sarno?
I'll second.
I will now, I will now take roll call. The vote, um, Commissioner Ayala.
Aye.
Commissioner Cervantes.
Aye.
Commissioner Flores.
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez.
Aye.
And Commissioner Sarno.
Oh, wow. Just throw me into the pit.
Oh, like it's a hard job.
It is. I just got done. I wanted to relax for a minute.
I would like to declare the office of Vice Chairperson vacant. Nominations are now open. Do any of the commissioners have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Jimenez.
Commissioner Jimenez, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Is there a chair right now? Who's, who's the vice chair? No vice chair?
We lost our vice chair.
Okay, okay. That was wrong. I'd like to nominate Isabel Cervantes.
Alrighty, so we have a nomination from David Ayala to nominate Commissioner Jimenez, and we also have a nomination from Jay Sarno to nominate Commissioner Isabel Cervantes. Commissioner Ayala, who would you like to vote for?
Commissioner Jimenez.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
And Commissioner Sarno.
Aye.
Roll call vote is five zero. Congratulations, Jay Sarno as our Chairperson.
Oh, wow. Just throw me into the pit.
Oh, like it's a hard job.
It is. I just got done. I wanted to relax for a minute.
I would like to declare the office of Vice Chairperson vacant. Nominations are now open. Do any of the commissioners have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Jimenez.
Commissioner Jimenez, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Is there a chair right now? Who's, who's the vice chair? No vice chair?
We lost our vice chair.
Okay, okay. That was wrong. I'd like to nominate Isabel Cervantes.
Alrighty, so we have a nomination from David Ayala to nominate Commissioner Jimenez, and we also have a nomination from Jay Sarno to nominate Commissioner Isabel Cervantes. Commissioner Ayala, who would you like to vote for?
Commissioner Jimenez.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Myself.
Alrighty, so we have a nomination from David Ayala to nominate Commissioner Jimenez, and we also have a nomination from Jay Sarno to nominate Commissioner Isabel Cervantes. Commissioner Ayala, who would you like to vote for?
Commissioner Jimenez.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Myself.
Commissioner Flores?
Jimenez.
And Commissioner Jimenez? And Commissioner, or Chair Sarno now.
Isabel Cervantes.
Alright, so the vote is three to two. Commissioner Jimenez, congratulations, Commissioner Jimenez, you are now the vice chair.
Could I, as Chair, I wanted to just add something to this. So on council, we did a rotation, so we don't have to always feel and do these types of things. And I think that if we continue to do a rotation, then it just makes it easier for everyone to, uh, just know their status and where they're going to be at in the rotation. I don't know if you guys want to maybe adopt something like that, that maybe we can do?
Yeah, we actually are in the process of looking into that. Um, we would have to adjust the bylaws.
Okay. Sounds good.
So the current bylaws, uh, right now, it dictates to do it in this manner?
Okay.
We can look into the bylaws and change it if that's what commissioners want to do. I think it'd be easier.
It just relieves a lot of pressure from a lot of us, because like, especially for me, I don't know who has been, you know, uh, the Chair, the Vice Chair, and in the rotation of where it was supposed to be, and I don't want to skip nobody that's for that, so. To give everybody the fair share, to be able to sit up here and run a meeting, so. That's, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, uh, consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine. Any consent items a planning commissioner wishes to discuss should be designated at this time. All other items may be approved in a single motion. For consent items one, two, and three, is there a motion and a second for the approval of item, or consent items?
All motion.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so ordered. Uh, do we do a roll call for this?
Yes, we do a roll call.
Okay. See, you guys are making me, I don't...
Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
And Chair Sarno?
Aye.
Five vote, passes.
So ordered, there is a fourteen day appeal period for anyone wishing to appeal these matters. Uh, we are now in the public hearing section. Public hearing to consider the proposed zoning code amendment to amend section one five five point five one nine Interstate six oh five corridor electronic billboards, sign program within Title fifteen land use, chapter one five five zoning of the Santa Fe Springs municipal code, and determination that the project is exempt from CEQA. I'd now call upon Planning Consultant Laurel Reamer to introduce this item, please.
Hello?
Uh, good evening. So the item before you tonight is more of a cleanup effort that will affect the billboard regulations for the six oh five freeway. For some background on billboards in our city, um, starting in November twenty twelve, the city adopted ordinance number ten thirty six, which established for the very first billboard regulations within the city, and that permitted billboards only within the freeway overlay zone along Interstate five. A few years later, in May twenty eighteen, ordinance number ten ninety two amended some of those regulations for the freeway overlay zone and added some additional design criteria. In September twenty twenty one, the city council adopted ordinance number one 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 eight, which established regulations for billboards within, along Interstate six oh five. The intent of the Interstate six oh five billboard ordinance was to allow for billboards within the manufacturing zones along the freeway. It included standards that were substantially similar to those along the freeway overlay zone, especially pertaining to location, operation, and design. And to date, there have been seven billboards constructed along Interstate five and none constructed along the six oh five. Some other, um, things that happened that affected billboards is in February twenty twenty two, the city adopted the general plan update, uh, the general plan, twenty forty general plan. This amended the land use map and changed some areas from industrial to light industrial. Subsequently, in September twenty twenty three, ordinance number one one three two adopted a new zoning map, which amended a few areas within the city. Why this matters for tonight is that the map on the left is the twenty twenty one zoning map, which was the map that was in place when the freeway over, when the six oh five freeway billboard standards were adopted. As you can see, well, I guess it's hard to see here, but all of the areas are the same shade of purple, meaning they were all M two. With the adoption of the updated zoning map in twenty twenty three, the areas to the east of the freeway were changed to M one, to light manufacturing. So the intent all along for the six oh five freeway billboard standards was to only allow them within this small stretch of freeway within these manufacturing zones, but because of the new zoning map, we ended up creating a conflict within our zoning code and needed to clean it up by allowing to have, uh, billboards within more than just the M two zone. So the amendment that's proposed is to strike out the M two zone restriction and to allow for billboards within manufacturing zones in general, and then to clarify that is the M one and M two zones along the six oh five freeway. And again, this is only affecting the six oh five freeway. It does not affect any of the I five freeway standards. The general plan, or the zoning text amendment is consistent with the general plan, uh, specifically with policy land use one point six, which is community benefits, and policy economic development four point five. Billboard developments are fiscally positive for the city. Billboard developers are required to enter into an operating agreement with the city, and the revenue that is raised from, that annual fee that is raised from the billboards goes into the general fund, which can then, um, pay for other services within the city. The operating agreement is also required to include compensation, um, in addition to monetary compensation, such as utilization of the billboard for city messages of community interests, such as advertising for the art fest, utilization of the billboard to display emergency alerts, such as any sort of evacuation warning, um, or amber alerts, and for any other emergency disaster-related communications. So the city, by allowing for billboards, does also get a benefit from having the billboards within the city. The zoning text amendment is exempt from CEQA per CEQA guideline section fifteen zero six one B three, which is the common sense exemption, which states that if a project can be shown to not have any, not have a significant effect on the environment, and in this case, it's just a text amendment, um, it is exempt from CEQA. The zoning text amendment was publicly noticed. It was posted around City Hall, City, the City Library, and Town Center kiosk. It was published in the Cerritos Community Newspaper, and no comments have been received. So, uh, the recommendation that staff has for you tonight is for the Planning Commission to find and determine that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA guideline section fifteen zero six one B three, find and determine that the zoning code amendment is consistent with the general plan goals, policies, and programs, and adopt resolution number two seven nine dash twenty twenty five, which incorporates the Planning Commission's findings and actions regarding this matter and recommends that the city council approve and adopt an ordinance to effectuate the proposed amendments to the zoning, the zoning code. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any commissioners have any questions?
None.
The public hearing is now open at six fifteen. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium. Seeing, uh, seeing no other speakers, the public hearing is now closed at six sixteen, or, yeah, six sixteen. Uh, this is now the time to deliberate by the commissioners, uh, commissioners who would like to start the discussion. No discussion?
No.
Alright. Uh, is there a motion to adopt the resolution number two seven nine twenty twenty five, which is incorporates the Planning Commission findings and actions regarding this matter?
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Planning Commission Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Sarno?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
So ordered, there is a fourteen day appeal period for any wishing to appeal this matter. Just to let you guys know now, there is a billboard, though, on the six oh five, uh, Honda World, just put it up right there. Right off the Florence exit, the Florence for Honda World, they just put it up.
So it's for five minutes.
Yeah. They're trying to copy us.
It's downy.
So, alright. New business, item number five, modification permit case number one three six four. A request to temporary reserve and not provide fifty-four required onsite parking stalls for the property located at one zero four two five South Painter Avenue within the M two heavy manufacturing zone. Juan Navarro, on behalf of the Los Angeles Center for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, La Cada. I would like to call upon the Associate Planner Claudia Jimenez to present this item.
Hi, good evening, planning commissioners, members of the audience and staff. Tonight, I will present to you item number five. The property is located at one zero four two five South Painter Avenue with the general plan land use designation of industrial and zoning for heavy manufacturing. The applicant is Los Angeles Center for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, also known as La Cada. The project site is a single parcel, APN number eight zero one one dash zero one four zero two four, covering approximately forty-six thousand two hundred square feet, one point zero six acres, and is located on the west side of Painter Avenue and south of Telegraph Road. La Cada has been operating at its current location since nineteen ninety-eight, under conditional use permit case number five five three. At that time, care for service facilities were not explicitly defined in the zoning code and were classified under section one five five two four three L for public, private, or quasi-public uses. And historically, parking needs for La Cada were calculated using a one to three hundred ratio, requiring thirty-seven stalls based on the eleven thousand forty-seven square foot building. In September of twenty twenty-three, the city updated parking requirements through the targeted zoning code update, adding care for service facilities, La Cada, to section code one five five two, one five five point four eight one. And as a result, La Cada now qualifies as supportive housing and must provide sixty-six parking stalls, including sixty for beds and six for staffs during maximum staffing levels. And to add, on August sixth, twenty twenty-four, La Cada submitted a request for a modification permit, mod case number one three six four, to reserve fifty-four of the sixty-six required parking stalls for its eleven thousand forty-seven square foot counseling and substance use disorder treatment center. La Cada is adding an outdoor recreation area to promote physical activity and social development for program participants. So La Cada, um, calls our patients participants, so you'll see that word being used through the entire presentation. So La Cada is requesting to temporarily reserve and not provide fifty-four of the required parking stalls, instead using that area for an outdoor recreational space for program participants. La Cada is required to provide sixty-six parking stalls, including sixty-four beds and six for staff during maximum staffing levels, but currently provides only twelve stalls with the previous calculation based on one to three hundred ratio, requiring thirty-seven stalls for its eleven thousand forty-seven square foot building before the city's parking updated in September of twenty twenty-three. The facility operates twenty-four seven with three staff shifts, morning shift from seven to four P M with six employees, swift shift from four to one A M with six employees, and graveyard shift from eleven to eight A M with three employees. It provides twelve parking stalls with no surplus stalls during the morning and swift shift change at four P M only. And there are three surplus stalls from eleven P M to one A M when nine staffs are on site. Outside agency visits occur Monday through Friday from eight A M to three thirty P M, and visitation hours are limited to the morning shift only from eight to three thirty P M. It is important to note that all participants are transported to the facility via institutional drop-off. Admissions are exclusively managed by the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, which is also known as CDCR. Participants do not transport themselves to the facility and do not bring or leave personal vehicles on site at any time. The property, bear with me. For our consideration, uh, actually, this is the site plan that the applicant had provided to us, and this is a alternative site plan. Should the applicant leave the site, they can provide the twelve plus an additional thirty-one, which is now equates to forty-three. So after review and analysis, staff has made a preliminary determination that the project qualifies for categorically exempt under CEQA. And notice of hearing was mailed to seven adjacent property owners on January sixteen, twenty twenty-five, and no inquiries have been received to date. And lastly, it is recommended to find and determine that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA under section code one five three oh one, class one for existing facilities, approve modification permit case number one three six four, and adopt resolution number two eighty dash twenty twenty-five, subject to the conditions attached to the resolution. And that, uh, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions regarding this matter? Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yes. Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
So what is it exactly that they're going to be having their participants doing out there?
Um, I do have the applicant here. They can provide you more detailed information on the type of use, if you like, more in detail.
Good evening. My name is Lily Rivas, and I'm the program director of another La Cada program similar to the program that's housed at this site. And the participants reside there to receive, um, services, to receive therapy, counseling, parenting services, they're housed there with their children as well, and they can live, uh, with us up to two years.
And they can, they come, they can come and go as they please, correct, with their kids or no?
Not necessarily. They have to be at a certain point in their program where they're able to do that, but it takes a while for them to get there.
But they have visitors?
They can have visitors, and visiting usually occurs during the weekends.
Okay, so, but what are they going to be doing out there where those parking stalls? I, I get what the services are, but...
Oh, okay, outside where the parking stalls would be. It's a recreational area. It's an outside area for them to be able to have just outside space so they can have a playground and play with their children, um, just spend their free time, maybe do some working out, because they live there. That's their residence, so that's what that area would be used for.
You would have fifty-four plus participants out there working out?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five participants.
It houses twenty-five women with up to forty children.
Is the area going to be fenced in for the safety of the children?
Yes.
So it mimics the Bloomfield site, the back area where they do volleyball and weightlifting and gardening and all that, correct?
What's the thought process for having zero parking in the back area of the space?
This is only women and children?
Yes, women and children.
I have a question. By limiting the amount of parking stalls, what's the impact to the community? Do people park on the streets? Do residents complain? Do we have complaints, or is there any issues with parking? Because if the sites doesn't have the capacity for, you know, like, visitors, where are they parking?
We don't have any complaints through code enforcement for that existing site that's been there since nineteen ninety-eight, and there, the participants do not drive, and the visitors are permitted on the weekends and also during the morning shift as well from eight to three thirty, um, before the shift change is at four P M.
So, um, only all twelve will be, um, taking up the space during four P M, right? And the shift change, and then there'll be like six, six empty stalls otherwise?
That is correct, yes.
I do have a question on, have we looked at the ADA compliance for wheelchair accessibility? Because I know where they park now, they park on the side, I seen, and is that up to date with our ADA requirements?
So they haven't submitted for any tenant improvements, and when they do, we will address it when the tenant improvements are being submitted.
If we're taking away parking requirements, shouldn't we have not... If we're taking away parking requirements, shouldn't we have not have this up to ADA requirement to up to par? Has at least that much of it?
So normally ADA is triggered, as Claudia mentioned, by upgrades and T I work. There is existing ADA stalls out there.
It's on the side.
Yeah. So is that being eliminated by this project?
So there's two stalls on the right end that are actually contained in the property as you're going in. There's two stalls on the left, and there is a walkway, there's ADA compliant going into the facility right there.
So, I mean, we can confirm with building department, but it sounds like there are existing ADA stalls that would be compliant with the code. Given that there's twelve stalls remaining, the one stall would be compliant in terms of quantity. We just need to make sure the access is, is okay.
So one, one more thing going off of Commissioner Flores is, in the past, I have heard that, I don't know if it's true, because there's no more parking on, on the street on Painter anymore, correct? In front of your building, there's no more, allow no more parking in the street, correct?
Well, they're actually, I mean, in front of the building, there are red zones, but then there's a strip where there's no red zone. But, you know, we would be parked there, we'd be parked.
But they do, do they do park on the street, the visitors, they do park on the street when they do come?
Assistant Planner Jimenez, can we see the map?
Doesn't go back. We're having. Oh, it's like skipping. Yeah. It's not even going back. Yeah, it's. Would you happen to have a copy of the?
There it is.
There it is. Okay. Here it is. In color, or would you like the?
No, this is fine. I'm just trying to picture. Yeah. So is the whole, is the whole back a hundred percent necessary to use for, like, would you be able to? Because that, what's, the total is eleven thousand square feet in the back?
Correct. The total square footage of the site is eleven thousand, approximately eleven thousand square feet.
Are they gonna, so they're just going to keep the same fence, so it's just going to be blocked in the way it is right now, the way?
That is correct.
Nothing changes? Okay. And you rarely have enough, enough, you, you have enough parking stalls on the day-to-day right now. You never have all twelve filled up. What's, what's the average amount on a weekend?
On a weekend, I would probably say maybe six or seven.
So six or seven, plus the six staff members, so that would be right at the twelve.
At varying times. Right, and the, and the weekend shift can be less because of the weekend.
What do you think about having sixteen stalls open? Is that going to mess up anything, having four extra stalls?
Well, you can't put it in the front, you would have to figure out something.
They would have to let, yeah, reconfigure the parking in the front area to be able to have sixteen stalls.
I don't have any more questions.
No, I have one more.
Go ahead, Joe.
As far as, I'm not really familiar with this property. Well, I'm not familiar at all with it. In the back, is there striping for the stalls? Is there like parking stalls that are striped?
In, in areas or is, yes.
Is there going to be some type of signage saying that there's no parking, something? Because if, I see stripes for a parking stall, I'm going to want to park there.
There's a wrought iron fence. There's a security gate.
Okay.
You can't go back there.
Okay, got it.
Anybody, anything else? Is there a motion to approve modification case number one three six four and adopt resolution number two eight zero twenty twenty-five, which incorporates the planning commission findings and actions regarding this matter?
I'll move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Planning Commission Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Cervantes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ayala?
Aye.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Chair Sarno?
Aye.
Passes five zero.
So ordered. Staff, staff communication, does any staff have any announcements?
A quick announcement. I also, I would like to say Happy New Year to the commission. Looking forward to working with you all this coming year. Also, just to mention, if you're not aware, the town home development, Malia Homes on Florence is now complete. And so thankfully, that project is done. On to the next.
I'm sure there's a lot of people that are happy with that.
I do have, I do have to mention the February meeting that we would normally have the second Monday. That is a city holiday, and so is the meeting after, which is the seventeenth. So depending on your availability for February, we would like to recommend a couple of dates if you're available to have the February Planning Commission meeting. So I have February the eleventh, the twelfth, the thirteenth, or the following week on the nineteenth, which is a Wednesday.
Did you say February fourteenth?
No.
I don't know about everybody else, but I'm going to be in trouble if I say yes.
No. It's a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, and then the following week, it's a Wednesday.
Tuesday?
I would say Tuesday, July.
Tuesday, the eleventh?
Tuesday.
Perfect. Okay, I'm all good.
Okay. Do any commissioners have any comments or something to report on?
Sorry. Well, I just want to welcome Chair Sarno and congratulations, Vice Chair Jimenez. And also the, the little renovation in here looks nice, clean. Happy New Year, everyone. That's it.
Thanks.
I just want to welcome Chair Sarno. You know, coming from mayor to chair, going to do a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for the nominations. I appreciate it. And Happy New Year to everyone.
I just want to say that I hope the, the kids enjoy their, their new playing space. And I want to say thank you to the committee for granting me the opportunity to be chairman for twenty twenty-four. And welcome Chairman Sarno.
Happy New Year to everyone. We could still say that, it's January. Welcome, Jay. Get to work with you instead of being on the other side complaining to you. Be different world, a different world now.
They will.
And welcome.
Thank you.
Myself, I just want to say thank you to everyone for the vote of confidence. I hope I do a good job being your chair, and hopefully, we can get a lot of things done in, in a positive manner and work well together. So thank you, guys. Happy New Year, and I look forward to working with everyone. So, thank you.
I was working on jackets for the planning committee, so.
We'll get, we'll get, we'll get that.
Yeah, please.
All right. This meeting is adjourned at six forty. The next meeting planned is set for February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, six P M. Thank you, guys. I'll get them.